Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
It is 7 o'clock. Well, after, few minutes after 7, we will call the meeting to order. And if anybody can, we can hear some background noise if they can turn their speakers on mute, that would be appreciated. Whoever it is that has the noise going. All right. Means call to order. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Denise?
David, I do not have any adjustments at this time. But I just briefly took a quick look at it when it was posted. But I cannot open them on my Mac. I have tried several times. So I don't know if that could be saved again as a PDF and sent that way. I've tried every month and it just won't work for me. I don't know if I'm doing something wrong, but if that's possible to save it as a PDF, that would be great.
Okay. All right, we can work on that.
Thank you.
Or I can email it to you specifically if the website isn't opening for you.
Okay, thanks.
Janet, any adjustments to the agenda?
No, I do have one for 10 seconds.
Okay. Minutes from the prior meeting. I will make a motion that they're approved.
I will second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Denise?
Aye.
David?
Yes.
I had some corrections to the meeting, to the minutes.
You had sent those out, didn't you, to us?
I don't think I sent you the corrections, with the corrections.
What are they?
It was concerning Terry's meeting house. There were a few changes there and also I had to add in a sentence when we were discussing the conflict of interest.
Can you read us the sentence you added?
I don't have it in front of me.
Well, we will approve the minutes and we will review them. If you could email the corrected ones out and if there is an objection to it, we will take it up at next meeting.
Okay.
Is that all right? Denise?
Yes, that's fine.
Can I ask a question?
Who is this?
Sheri.
Yeah, go ahead, Sheri.
So on the minutes, I had noticed that there was not a unanimous vote on something that had happened. And having been present at the meeting, I wasn't even aware that there was a not unanimous vote. So I had asked Darlene about spelling that out in the minutes. And she wasn't clear as to whether or not that was an appropriate thing to do. And I just felt like if we were all present in a meeting, we would witness what the vote was, who voted, how they voted, et cetera. The way we were seeing the three of you together at the town office last time, we actually weren't seeing the three of you together. We were, it was a very limited screen that we could see. It was very difficult to know when a vote was being taken, who might have been voting yea or nay on it. So I think that the minutes should reflect, if there's not a unanimous vote, it should reflect who voted against it, I guess, or who voted for it, whichever it will answer the question.
Sheri, I can speak to that. I believe that was the vote for the gravel that you're talking about?
Correct.
And I had voted against it, so.
Right. And I understood that. But the question Darlene had was whether or not she could spell that out in the minutes. And my question is, it was a public meeting and had it been in, and you know, everybody sitting there, it would have been very clear who voted and how they voted. So I would like to request that that's in minutes. I think I requested that a couple of years back on something, but I'm just repeating it.
I do not believe that that goes against any open meeting laws. I believe that that can be posted.
Right, that's what I thought too. Thanks, Denise.
Yes, if there is a dissenting vote or not a unanimous vote, it should go into the minutes as who voted which way.
Thank you.
We will review the corrections and go from there, so.
Thank you for clarifying that, David.
Public comments, no more than 3 minutes per person. And it's a little difficult for me to see everybody, so if, I will go down the list and if you have a public comment, speak. And if I miss you or you don't get it on fast enough, we can come back to you. So Amber Stevens, do you have anything?
No.
April Lyman? April?
Yes, I do. I have a question about the commissioner selected for Taylor Hill. We, I have not been aware of any meeting or anything posted about that with minutes. When did you have a meeting to discuss that person?
The attorney had asked for names that we could get for that. We did not have a public meeting as to who it was. But we put in a couple of names to the, to our attorney to forward. And it's a judge that will decide who is appointed or who isn't. It's not us that pick the commissioner, it's the judges.
But I thought if you guys got together, it had to be an open meeting and it had to be warned.
It does.
So who got together for that?
I submitted the names to the attorney. All right. Anything else, Bonnie? Darlene, do you have anything?
No, just to let you know that the warrants are there on the table. And there's also a wait permit that needs to be signed.
All right. Dennis, anything?
Nothing at this time, David.
Don, anything?
No, nothing at this time, David.
Donna? Donna? Donna, do you have anything? All right, if not, we'll move on. Danny, do you have anything? Danny?
No, I have nothing.
Hannah? Hannah, do you, anything?
David, she shook her head no.
All right. Krista?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to share that I was disappointed at how the board handled the questions at the last meeting regarding the conflict of interest policy. As was discussed, the newest board member is the parent of one of the only two town employees and is therefore directly related to hiring and salary decisions. And is also a close family member to multiple individuals involved in the petition against the town. So I'm just wondering if on the record, the board can clarify whether they have a conflict of interest policy, how that will be followed in, more importantly, what will be done in the situations inevitably over the term that involve either the road commit, excuse me, the town employee or the petition. Thank you.
David, can I speak to that?
Yes.
Okay. I was, I have been in contact with the League of Cities and Towns. We do, Krista, have a conflict of interest policy. I have gone over that policy with Carl from the League of Cities and Towns. He has sent me his copy of their policy just to compare it. And the recommendation he has made, any and all that has to do with the employee and the board member with the relation, she must recuse herself and may not vote and may not sit in on. As far as anything having to do with Taylor Hill, again, she has to recuse herself because she is related, although it was not clear, and I am still in contact with Carl, whether she needs to leave the room when we're in executive session about that, or if she can just recuse herself from the vote when we come out, that is still unclear. But anything having to do with the parent and son, she must recuse herself.
Well, let, wait a minute. No, hold on, I'll let you follow up. Also, our attorney reviewed the policy, a current policy, and he came to a different conclusion that Janet could sit in on the discussions on Taylor Hill because she does not have a specific interest in that herself. And that was the basis of the inquiry about that. I think she understands dealing with an employee, that that would be a conflict. But as far as Taylor Hill, our attorney has given us the guidance that he does not believe that our policy would require, or the model policy that VLCT currently has would require her to step down from Taylor Hill. He suggested that members would live on a road and it would be, it would not be reasonable that we would recuse ourselves, that say Denise and I would recuse ourselves for issues that dealt with Route 35 because we lived on the road. And with Janet not owning property on Taylor Hill, that would probably, if she did, that could be another issue. But she does not, and that would not conflict her out on the road issue.
Thanks so much for clarifying all that, I appreciate it. So just to clarify, Janet will be sitting in on and voting on decisions related to the Taylor Hill petition?
That's, that's what our attorney said that would be reasonable and proper.
Yeah, thanks, thanks so much, and I appreciate that. And just on the record, as an attorney myself, I would just like to point out that I think that there could be strong disagreement as to that conclusion, but I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay.
And so David, just also to clarify what Carl from the League of Cities and Towns had mentioned to me, that Janet should recuse herself. And if she doesn't, we can ask her to do that if we deem that to be so. So he was hoping that anything that came to do with the conflict of interest because of mother and son, that she would recuse herself on her own and not ask to be recused.
Okay. All right. Lynn, do you have anything? For public comment?
I have the select board report, and that's a different time, correct?
Well, boards and officials will be a bit later, yes.
Okay, then nothing.
All right. Tina, do you have anything?
Not at this time.
Sheri?
I just want to thank you for clarifying the question on the conflict of interest that you have already, because that was one of my questions. The other kind of goes back to what I already spoke to, and that is, I don't, I'm not sure, David, if you and Janet are together in a space right now. But all, okay, all I can see is your hand and your head, and so the rest of us, that's all we can see. I don't know what you can do to change that, but if there's more than one person, especially more than one of the select board members in a room together, I would really appreciate, and I think others would as well, being able to situate whatever your devices are so that we can see those folks who are there and not just the tops of their heads.
All right, we have one device, which is my personal iPad, and the camera on that does not, is not working well for getting panoramic views. If the town, if we continue to have to do virtual meetings, maybe the town can get some kind of a webcam and set it up in the town office for that. But if you don't, if you can't hear something or want something repeated, Sheri, you can ask for that, so.
I will certainly do that, but when I don't hear something, I don't necessarily know I didn't hear it, which is the case of what happened last time. So that's kind of what my point is.
All right, there are limitations with virtual meetings.
Totally get it.
But we will try and be as clear as we can with that, so.
Thank you.
David, can I just speak to, Sheri, I had recommended that with just only three board members, we could socially distance at the town clerk's office and that we do come together for the meetings and socially distance. And I know it is hard with just one device. I don't know if we want to each bring our own device, maybe. The only reason why I am not there, I am at my mom's house taking care of my mom because my sister who takes care of her is ill, so I could not be in Vermont at this time. And that's why I am virtual, otherwise I would have been at the town clerk's office myself.
Thanks, Denise, I appreciate that.
All right. Wishy, do you have something for public comment?
No, I don't have anything, thank you.
All right, Matt?
Nope.
Nothing, all right. Is there anybody else that I missed that has come in or didn't get on that wants to make a public comment? All right, then we will move on to boards and officials. And Amber, anything from listeners?
No, not at this time.
Darlene, anything for boards and officials? Darlene?
No, not at this time, David.
Don, anything for secretaries?
Nothing, I, David.
All right. Hannah, anything for the budget?
I just wanted to check if the select board received the email with the budget report and the balance sheet in it today.
I did not.
I didn't either.
But I haven't checked, what time did it come out?
You know, I sent it to myself also, and I never received it either, so it must be stuck in the outbox at the town office. I will try to resend it tomorrow or later next week.
Okay.
I don't, there's nothing critical in it.
Okay. Lynn, anything for boards and officials?
Just an update on what's been going on at the school board. I wanted to report that starting this coming Monday, the Grafton Elementary School will be going K through 6, 5 days a week. So no more of the remote.
No more?
Unless we have another snow day. The SU is looking into composting all the food scraps because that has become, with all the COVID stuff, we've realized that that has become very costly with all the changes that the state has brought down. So we're looking into being able to compost them at each of the campuses rather than shipping it out, using it as a learning experience. And this summer, with the education funds from the federal government, they're going to be able to run six weeks of summer school for kids that'll be entering first grade to 8th grade.
Okay.
And each week will be a different theme, like nature or courts, and they're going to throw a few field trips in there as well. So it sounds like it's going to be a very busy summer for the kids.
All right.
And I wanted to report that the Grafton Elementary School's 2nd grade teacher, Kelly Halleck, has received Vermont Teacher of the Year Award. We're very proud of her. She's been a great teacher.
I have a question for Lynn. Have we heard anything from the state about Westminster withdrawing?
We have all the paperwork in on that as of today, and we are still waiting. They sent us the stuff they needed from us, and that has been sent in?
Okay, thank you.
Hopefully I'll have something for you next time.
All right. Anybody else for boards and, Sheri, do you have something? Sheri, do you have anything for the meeting house?
Yeah, there isn't really much of an update from last month. We're still waiting on a grant agreement from the Paul Bruin Fund Grant from Preservation Vermont, which we haven't received. And we're in the meantime just working on getting clarity on the scope of work of the project that we are hoping to pursue. But I'm getting a little concerned at this point in time about any of the contractors that might be interested in the job still having space on their schedule for this season, but we'll do the best we can.
All right. I have spoken to the individual that we had discussed a few months ago about helping us with grants, and they are still interested in that, and they advised they could come on to the May meeting. It might be something, Sheri, that if you want to contact them, I can give you their information. You may have it already, but just if you want to contact them about maybe any of this grant or anything that they may be able to help you with on that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, David, I don't know what you're referring to from having discussed.
We had discussed.
We being the board or you and I?
The board.
Okay.
And David, just to clarify, that was probably maybe November or December, so it was quite some time ago that we had discussed it, and he was going to get ahold of the person, but we haven't really heard anything definite yes or no. So it's not something that we discussed recently.
That's correct. But I spoke with them recently, and they said that they could have something for us at the May meeting. But I can give you his information, Sheri, if you want to speak to him. They were going to do it on an hourly basis to try to assist us.
I'm not sure if this is someone assisting in grant writing or assisting in grant management, assisting in communication with grantors?
Probably all three. They would, they would be able to assist us with that. They may not write the grant, but they may be able to find the grant for us and assist us with that, so.
Well, that's good to know for the future. We may need that next, for our next level of work when we start to go after the interior. But I certainly wouldn't want to call on any town funds to pay for communication with folks that we've already been communicating with on this grant. I don't, I don't see any need for it, but good to know. Thank you.
With the stimulus, the new stimulus package that's out there, there certainly are funds that the town may be able to get in on. And that's, having somebody that's a professional with it can only help us. They're going to be, like I said, an hourly basis, not a, not a full-time.
Okay, well, with that regard, that's good to know. I don't know what kind of a timeframe that might put on us for, you know, we're looking at any interior work would be, be doing that, I don't think, until the following year. But you know, if there's money available in the meantime that we could go ahead with some of that, that would be great. I would certainly be interested.
All right.
And David, would that, would paying of that person come from the grants itself or an hourly rate from our budget?
Well, I think we have to assume, until we know which grants are which and what the grant is, that we would have to assume that it would have to come out of our budget. But probably there would be grants, if we got them, that would, that may pay for the facilities.
Or administrative fees or something like that. And would that person be as a contractor to the town or not a town employee, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So. All right, anybody else for boards and officials? Oh, I had one other thing. The Solid Waste District will be holding their household hazardous waste collection in Springfield on May, I believe it's the 25th. There probably will be a placard put out for that. I'm not sure if Darlene has been given a flyer, but probably if she hasn't, she will get one to have here at the town office as to what can and what can't be taken to the household hazardous waste collection.
David, I do have those flyers, they're on the shelf by my desk.
Okay, so the collection will be from 2 to 6 on that date. You load up what it is, you drive to the Springfield Recycling Center, and you just sit in the car and they will take it out, truck, car, whatever, and it's no cost to, no cost to anybody to do that. And it's something that we should avail ourselves of if you have things like that.
The flyer is also on the website. Somebody sent that to go on the website, so it's on the homepage.
Okay, that's good.
Thanks, thanks for mentioning that, David. I'll be sure we get it in the Athenian.
All right. The solid waste RFPs, did we receive anything from that?
Yes. We received one. We received one bid from Decap Trucking from Vermont with the contract of 36501. And they said May, the starting date of May 17th, because that was in the original thing before Darlene and I discussed putting in May 3. I called them today and they didn't seem to have any problems with making it sooner if needed, other than May 17. They're willing to do bi-weekly curbside trash and then the next, but they require the recycling to be bagged. And if you have cardboard, they like it to be broke down and possibly tied together just so it doesn't all spread out and it's easier to collect.
So when they say bagged, do they mean plastic bags?
Yes, for the recycling, yes. Plastic bags, I asked her if they meant, you know, clear bags. She didn't care what color bagged it was, as long as the recycling was bagged.
So not just in cans like we were doing it for Triple T, it must be bagged?
Yep. It's got to be bagged. It's just for, so it doesn't blow out all over.
Okay.
So.
Question?
Well, wait a minute, I got a couple of questions here too. So the 36501 would just be for the trucking? It would not be for disposal of the waste itself?
I think that's everything. Yes. Pickup and proper disposal of bagged and recycling.
Okay.
So we'll still use our Green Athens bags for the trash, then we can use whatever bags we want for our recycling?
Yes.
Okay.
Also, does the recycling have to be sorted or just in the one bag?
They just wanted it bagged. I asked about the, like I said, cardboard, because that's usually bigger, and they said as long as it's broke down and maybe just have a string around it so it would all stay together.
A question I had on the bags, would grain bags be allowable?
I, if they're the same type of grain bags I have, I doubt it because they're If they're the same type of grain bags I have, I doubt it because they're not recyclable.
Well, the thing with bags are the bags, they're not recyclable. So I don't know how they're going to then recycle when they're all bagged up in plastic, like plastic bags, but...
Janet, can you get those clarified, what type of bags they want them in? And maybe we can let Darlene know, and she could put a little, or Hannah can put a little something on the website just to give everyone, and then let Sherry know for the Athenian?
Yeah, I can do that. I mean, like I said, I called, and we've been playing phone tag for a while.
And that was the only company that got back to us?
Yes. And there is another option from the Solid Waste in Windsor, Wyndham thing. I was talking to Tom and he said that they could do a, they call it fast trash, where the trucks come once a week, and he stated here on a Wednesday from 4:00 to 6:30. And you could bring your trash and your recycling down, and it costs about $700 per week.
And so he would be at like the town garage or something?
Yeah, or the school or something like that, one set-up place where people could come and put their trash in the...
In the truck.
In the truck.
So if you do that every week, that would actually cost more?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Who asked it? Sherry, was that you?
Sherry, yeah. Janet, can you clarify with them that it's, that maybe if recycle is put out in a closed container, does it still need to be bagged? Is there a bag request so that it doesn't blow around before they get there? If they're opening a container and dumping it into a truck, why would it need to be in a bag?
No, it has to be in a bag.
I think it's because their truck, if they're doing it this, were they going to be doing it the same day? The trash and the recyclables?
No.
But that it may blow out of the loose, out of the truck. If they, if they throw a bag in, they don't have to run the truck each time to compress it, would be my thinking on that, is why they would want that, but I don't know.
But David, your point about plastic bags that aren't recyclable, how could, I mean, they can't be compacting it in there with plastic bags that aren't recyclable. I mean, I don't know that they can be compacting it anyway because then, you know, all of the recyclables are kind of blended in together, which I'm guessing they need to be sorted at some point.
Well, they are blended and compacted and then sorted at one of the MRF units there. But no, they are compacted.
Okay.
Recyclables can be compacted, and then at the facilities that they take them to will separate them out. And maybe they can separate the plastic bags at these centers as well. I don't know.
And so were there other contractors that were contacted for this?
Yes.
Are there others that could be contracted?
I contacted everybody. That was on the Solid Waste Management List and everybody that was in the yellow pages around. And I thought there was one in Brattavore, and he was really interested in it. And I called him, I believe, Tuesday, and said that he has a labor problem with getting help. He wanted to do it, but he couldn't do it this year.
And I think that's what, that's what Triple T's issue was, that they were having trouble.
And what about, what about Rosario's?
They didn't want to put a bid in.
Okay, thank you.
I called this morning, and they said they didn't think that they'd be putting a bid in.
I have a question. So first, clarifying, and then just sort of a follow-up logistic question. So clarification that we need to wrap our recycling in a plastic bag?
That's what it sounds like. I mean, I haven't talked to them. That's what they've told Janet.
Okay.
It seems strange to me, but they have it in the proposal.
So given that it is illegal for stores to give us plastic bags when we're buying, are we supposed to then go out on our own and find somewhere to buy plastic bags which are like anti-environmental to do an environmental thing, which is recycling? That feels a little counterintuitive and also logistically difficult. Like where would we even go to get plastic bags?
Well, I know that plastic bags are sold pretty well anywhere. I know what I do is when I, I do bag my recyclables, but I have a, the paper bags that are like lawn leaf bags that are, that are like a regular paper bag you'd get in the store, only larger. And that's what I have been doing right along. But I agree with you. I don't see the point in putting plastic bags. But if that's what they want, or say they need, I'm not sure what we can do about it if they're the only...
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. Do you mind if we just get clarification from them? Like, I understand that it's in the proposal, but can we just get like written explicit confirmation that this is what they want? Because it seems very unusual.
Well, it is written in here. It is written in the proposal. They got bagged recycling for one year, starting the 17th.
I just don't feel like there's harm in asking, and if that's like non-negotiable.
No, there's no harm in asking that.
Thank you.
Janet, if we... What with this company, do you know whether they start with trash first or recycling? Well, I would assume that it would be our choice. What they, you know, if they can start the third, then that would be trash, I believe. And then the next would be recycling.
Can I get clarification on when this is supposed to start?
The proposal says the 17th, which Triple T said they would, they would continue to do it if they had to up until then. But if we can get the new company to do it, I think Triple T would appreciate that, that they want to be out of it as soon as they can because they don't have help, people to drive, drivers.
And this is 17th of April or May?
May.
Thank you.
David, has anyone looked into getting one of those big recycle bins to put at the town garage that we could go sort our own and put in there? I don't know if that would be cheaper. And what about a big, like 30-yard dumpster that you could have dumped? I don't know how quick it would fill up, but is that cheaper to do that and have it at the town garage?
Well, I mean, we looked at that years ago, and it wasn't going to be much cheaper. And we would have to get a permit for a transfer station, which was going to be a bit onerous for the town to get a transfer permit to set up a dumpster. I'm not sure we necessarily want a 30-yard dumpster to be sitting out in the sun and the snow for days at a time, for weeks at a time between dumping it at the town garage or the town office. And in the past, it didn't, it wasn't going to save us much money.
And David, I believe, as a budget committee, we discussed this a few years ago, and we thought that that would need to be manned. It wouldn't be able to be left there, and that would add to the cost.
Yes, and it has to be fenced in? So it can be locked so everybody and their brother doesn't throw it from other towns or whatever.
Okay.
Are those laws specific to Vermont?
Well, yeah.
Like having to fence it in and having to be manned and all of that? Because I feel like, for example, in the, in this city, you just sort of have dumpsters and...
Well, to have a permanent one, a transfer station, you would have to do something like that. Now Townsend, they have a truck that they open up, but that's a compactor where they can compact the trash and just leave, but just leaving an open dumpster that the town has, I suspect that we would have to go through, we'd have to probably put a pad in, and we would probably have to, I didn't know about the fencing myself, but that doesn't seem unreasonable. But then also just the smell and the trouble. If we get a foot of snow, we've got to deal with a foot of snow in the dumpster. If it's 90 degrees out and have three weeks of trash in the dumpster, I'm not sure that that's, that's what the neighbors would like.
And just a quick thing, though. At the pre-town meeting, conference meeting, this was brought up, though, specifically about the smell. And I just want to reiterate that it was said there, there shouldn't be a smell because everybody should be composting. So these should be items that wouldn't have a stench and wouldn't attract animals.
That is, that would absolutely be the hope. But nobody's going to be going through people's trash bags to see if they have thrown out something that they shouldn't. But no, they should not be, they should not be throwing it in the trash. But I suspect that that is, that is an issue.
Well, I would just want to clarify that because I do believe that meat and bone, meat scraps and bones are still something that households can be putting in trash because we don't want to be putting them in our backyard compost bins.
Also, you have the meat trays that meat comes on, and just sitting in my kitchen for a few days gets pretty stinky. We still have stinky stuff even though we're composting.
And, I mean, people compost. Certainly out here, it's easy enough to do. But it's not, not, I don't know that 100% of Athens is doing it, although we are a perfect community to do it. Last year, I went to put some compost in. The bear got scared when he saw me and took off running, and really, there wasn't much of a composter left. So things happen with the composters, so.
I just wonder whether or not, you're mentioning what Townsend is doing. I know that the transfer station over in, I guess it's in Westminster that services Rockingham has been something that's been talked about as a possibility for us since that is also part of our Solid Waste District. I know Townsend is not, but are there any possible options to be able to utilize those facilities on some kind of a paid or contracted basis that might be an alternative for us?
Well, two years ago, we put that forward as a proposal at town meeting, and it was voted down rather handily that people wanted the curbside pickup. The, at this time, and Rockingham can change their mind at any time, but at this time, you can buy a sticker for the Rockingham facility for $35 and then pay the $250 a bag to dispose of it there on the Saturday, Monday, and Wednesday. They're open in the mornings. So a person in Athens can do that, can buy the sticker, can put that on there. We had discussed the town making the contract with Rockingham. If the vote had, if the vote had passed, but that had, but the vote was roundly defeated that they wanted curbside pickup in town and not to, not to have.
So this contract is for, David, this contract is for a year, right?
It is.
Okay. So we can discuss it, we can discuss it again and put it on for next March if you want to not have curbside pickup, but it was nominously voted down two years ago. I don't know if the cost and with the new regulations, what the situation would be. But there are a lot of people in town who cannot get to Rockingham, and their option would be to have private pickup from a smaller company or get their own little dumpster. But we can also put that back on for March 22.
I mean, there certainly are people in town that have a dumpster that they use. There's actually quite a few of them that do that and don't use the curbside pickup, so. And this will not, at the 36501, this will not be over the amount that we budgeted for trash removal for this year.
I believe we budgeted $44,000.
Yes. So it's not that this is going to break the budget on that. With Triple T, we paid for the trucking, the pickup, and then we paid separately for the tonnage that was, that was generated.
So I have a question. Because you put the trash out for a vote at town meeting, and it passed, that we would go every other week. I understand that Triple T is not going to be that company, but because the townspeople voted on it, whatever company you go with, wouldn't it still have to be in every other week?
It is.
It is.
So why are we even discussing getting all this other stuff? If the townspeople already voted on it, doesn't it have to be that for, until at least next year?
Well, no, it doesn't have to be that way until next year, but that's what we want, that's what was expected with Triple T getting out, and if nobody, nobody put in an RFP for us, then we might have to look at something else. I think so for this year that we need to stay with the curbside pickup as, as people were expecting when they voted. We did not know that Triple T was not going to continue servicing us until after town meeting.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anybody else have anything on this that they want to discuss? I will, if not, then I will make a motion that we accept the RFP from Decamp for this with the proviso that this figure includes the tonnage and that we do not have to pay tonnage on top of that. I believe it for trucking and disposal. Is there a second?
David, I will second that, but I do want to have clarification on that. And...
On what? Please, on what?
Clarification whether the tonnage is included.
Yeah. This vote will be contingent on that. If they say, no, no, you have to provide, you have to pay for tonnage, then we'll need a special meeting to discuss that because we will be...
And I'd like to, can I make a friendly amendment into that to have you sign that once that is clarified?
Yes.
Also, I think something that may have been forgotten, that I just want to make sure it gets in there, that if possible, can it be negotiated to not have it be in plastic bags for the recycling?
We will talk to them about that. I wouldn't want to hold us up and lose the, lose the one place there if they say that needs to be bagged up.
Fair enough, but if possible, then, then great, right? That's a whole idea.
I would agree. I don't, I don't see the purpose in bagging recyclables in plastic bags myself either, so.
Great. Thank you, David.
All right. So ready for the vote? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. And Janet, you'll get in touch with Decamp and deal with that?
Yes. No, I just...
All right. Warrants and mail. I will make a motion that we sign the warrants. Is there a second?
One second there.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. Rose?
One moment, David. Darlene, when I get back into town, I will stop by the town office and sign those. The warrants. Thanks. The warrants. Thanks.
All right, uh, Rhodes, Matt.
All righty. Well, everything's doing a lot better than it did app, right after the last selectmen's meeting. We had from the pond out by Steve Oaks, the town line fall apart. Uh, we've spent the rest of our gravel budget putting the road back together. Uh, first thing I think we ought to do as soon as this snowstorm melts off is start doing the underdrain project down there to alleviate the problems that we've had over the years down there. Hopefully that'll work. And, uh, that's about it, really.
We, we've got a grant for that, Matt? Is that correct?
For the underdrain? No, it was in the budget for last year.
Yeah, but weren't you applying for a Better Back Roads grant?
Yeah, that's to get rid of the ledge.
All right.
And, and just to confirm, where is the underdrain going, Matt?
Uh, it's going to be down right around fourth, uh, four thirty-two, I believe the address is, right at the bottom of Hedgehog, right before going down Little Hedgehog right there.
So it's not, it's, it's down the road way past the pond, it's not near the pond where it gets.
No, it's, it's way down where it's hard to get to if it does fall apart.
Okay.
I want to start at the farthest point and work our way back.
Will you be able to do that yourself, Matt, or will you need to put it out for bed?
We should be able to do that ourselves.
Okay.
David, I have a question.
All right.
All right, this, uh, this road seems to fall apart almost every year. How come the town doesn't get an engineer to look at it?
We can if you want to spend the money.
Well, we were told to on Taylor Hill, and so I would think it'd be a wise move.
Completely, Danny, that's a completely different issue.
All right.
David, I'm talking to you, so, um, I just, I think that it's silly. He just made the comment that hopefully the underdrain would work. So why would we take and spend a lot more money on just a hope?
Well, I know the underdrain has worked in, uh, up on thirty-five, where it was put in a few years ago in some, uh, in some places that we did. Um, and I suspect that it would help down there, um, as it did on thirty-five.
Well, there's many different techniques to it and classes out there, which our road crew has never been to any of them classes. So I just think that'd be good money to have someone that, you know, um, Better Back Roads guys would help with that kind of stuff recharged.
Okay, all right. Anything else, Matt? Are you ready for this snowstorm?
Yep. Hopefully it's the last one of the year.
All right, Denise?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions from the warrants from last month. I know that they weren't available at the town meeting, and then when I went, I had some questions for some things that were on there from Matt. And I didn't know when would be a good time, since we're not doing warrants now, because I'm not there, if I could ask those at this point.
Go on.
I just had some questions about, um, stuff that you had welded. Don't we have, didn't we get, or already get our welder?
No, we haven't purchased it yet. I just ordered it. It should be on the way.
Okay, and then there was a bunch of things bought at Snell Auto Parts. I just didn't understand what they were for. It looks like it says angle one cylinder, AG one cylinder.
Yep, that's the, that's the, uh, cylinders that go on the little plow for the little truck.
And for the backhoe?
Backhoe. What was the one for the backhoe? I don't have it in front of me, so I can't.
Okay, it says, well, I thought it was a, a cylinder, it says, and, and diesel exhaust, it looks like, for the backhoe or something like that. And I, I wasn't, I was unclear of that. Maybe if you don't mind, if you get a chance, you can just check on those. It was in, in last month's warrant.
All right, next time, Monday, when I come down to the town office, Darlene, we'll look at those.
Yeah, I was just curious, because it, it was three, four, five, over six hundred dollars, so I just didn't quite know what, what it was. And how are the trucks holding up?
Good.
Okay. That was all. Thank you.
All right. Um, executive session, do we have, Janet, did you say you had something for?
Yes, I had a personnel issue.
A personnel issue?
Yes.
Okay, um. Well, I will make a motion that we enter into executive session on a personnel issue that, um, where premature public knowledge replaces, it's at a disadvantage. Is there a second for that?
I second it.
Um, what we will do is Denise, will you be able to call my phone?
Um, I think I can, David. Give me one second.
Okay.
So David, how does that work?
We will, we will be in executive session. Uh, if, if there is topics there that we feel that should not be in executive session, or it wa, it pertains to a matter that, um, Janet shouldn't be in, we will deal with that at that point and, and come out and announce that. Um, but we don't know what, or I don't at this point. So we will go into executive session, we will come out of executive session, and we will let everybody know. We are out of executive session at, uh, eight twenty-five. No decisions were made in executive session. Um, I will make a motion that, um, we raise the, uh, pay of the, uh, elected, elected and appointed officials that we pay an hourly wage to, to eleven dollars and seventy-five cents. And that be retroactive back to January first.
And, and that, just to make a friendly amendment, David, that is to meet, meet minimum wage requirements.
Uh, I was going to explain that, that, that it is, uh, that is the minimum wage for, for, uh, Vermont as of January first. And we were paying them, I think eleven twenty-five before that, so even though I think the town is exempt from the minimum wage laws, I think it's only reasonable to pay the auditors and the listers and the constable at least minimum wage, so. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
All right, any discussion on that? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
David, is that a complete list that you just gave of who's affected by this?
It's probably not. Um, it will affect the auditors, it will affect the listers, it will affect the constable. Um, Darlene, can you think of somebody else?
The pole workers.
The pole workers.
Yeah.
It'll affect the pole workers. Um, yes, I think that's a complete list, but I, I may be, I may be mistaken on that, so.
And what was the pay rate prior to this?
Eleven twenty-five.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any further business? There are none. I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.